This will be February twenty seventh through twenty eighth in Santa Fe at the La Fonda Hotel. And at this time, we have a Raton Police Department promotion. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to call forward Ms. April Lopez and Chief Garcia. Mayor, it is with great pride that we mark this day by recognizing dispatch supervisor April Lopez as she is promoted to the rank of Lieutenant. Lieutenant Lopez has demonstrated exceptional leadership, dedication, and unwavering commitment to serving our community as our supervisory dispatcher. Throughout her time with the city, I have personally witnessed the highest standards of professionalism, integrity, and teamwork. This promotion reflects the hard work and dedication that Lieutenant Lopez has put into her career and the ability to lead and inspire others. As a lieutenant, we are confident she will continue to exemplify the qualities that make her an outstanding asset to our community. It is critical that each first responder recognize her knowledge, skills, and abilities, and have another key leader to look up to when the chips are down. Sir?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Caller. See, Mr. Mestes, this is not my forte. Don't stab yourself. Too late.
I would like to say that April is one of the most dedicated City of Raton employees that we have. We tease her across the hall and call her Hammer because she is. She's excellent at what she does, she's knowledgeable at what she does, and that dispatch center wouldn't be what it is without her. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alrighty. Introductions of new employees. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to call forward Ms. Dani Gumm and Stephen Baker.
I'd like to welcome Stephen Baker to our team at the library. He started last Wednesday, and he shows a really good promise.
Cool. Welcome aboard.
I appreciate the chance to work for y'all.
Words you'd like to share?
Well, I haven't been in Raton long. I came down here to care for my ailing mother before she passed, and I inherited her house. And I have to say, since I've been here in a short amount of time, I haven't felt more welcomed in the city before, so I look forward to continuing to work for y'all.
Great. Glad to have you. All right, moving on to item five. Items from citizens present. At this time, we'll take comments from the public. If it's something that is related to an action item, please wait until that item comes to the floor. Anyone wishing to address us at this time? Seeing none, we'll get into business. Item five, six, A, or five, six. Item six, A. Deliverate an act on approval of January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes. Y'all should have a chance to have a chance to go over them. There are no corrections or additions to the minutes. They will stand as presented. Any comments, questions? All right. Minutes stand approved. Thank you. Item B. Deliverate an act on agreement number two, five, dash, six, nine, zero, dash, three, zero, 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 dash, eight, one, two, two, six between the New Mexico Children, Youth, and Families Department and the City of Raton. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, tonight, items B and C are related, and I will address them together. However, the commission needs to vote on items B and C separately. Item B is an agreement that is part of the juvenile justice program designed to provide cost-effective services and temporary nonsevere alternatives to the detention of youth who have been arrested or referred to juvenile probation office or may risk for referral. This program aims to provide a supporting environment that will help students complete a high school diploma or GED. The scope of work runs through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. The grant award is for fifty-nine thousand dollars with matching funds of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty, which may include cash, land, equipment, or in-kind services. Item C is the award of the subcontract between the City of Raton and New Hope Family Counseling Limited Liability Corporation for item B. I would like to call forward Danielle Vanderpoel and Angie Ortega from New Hope Family Counseling to explain items B and C. First Danielle.
Thank you. Hello, City Commissioners, City Mayor, City Manager, and City Clerk. My name is Danielle Vanderpoel. I have been the City of Raton Continuum Coordinator since two thousand thirteen now. And as I grew up in this community, I am honored to be here and seeing the growth in the program since two thousand thirteen has been a really rewarding reward. Tonight, I'd like to begin by sharing the framework that has laid the foundation of the City of Raton Continuum. I will then follow with an informative presentation by New Hope Family Counseling owner Angie Ortega. Come on up, Angie. And we also have a great guest speaker here tonight, Ms. Jo Salazar. She is a supervisor of Team Builders Mental Health and student at the Alternative Schooling when that existed. We're really excited, and first, I'd like to thank the City of Raton as the fiscal agent, along with Michaelan Antinucci and all of her staff. It's been ongoing support of the program since two thousand thirteen. We started with eight thousand dollars in program funding for Girls Circle, Boys Counsel, and Restorative Justice. During that time, there was a high need for the programming, and it was interventively being seeked out as well. The City of Raton Continuum Advisory Board has had over fifty important members and is an important support that meets every month to review all of our programming and financial support. We are currently four times that amount. The programs have really grown and expanded. All important decisions are developed through strategic planning, needs assessment, contract compliance, deliverables fulfilled by subcontracts, grant writing by myself with Michaelan's guidance, and also with Core CAP. Thank you to Youth Heartline and to New Hope Family Counseling and facilitators for the work they do every day. We currently have nine facilitators, and the facilitators are truly the face of the programs. The City of Raton Continuum has established lasting relationships and connections with the public schools, students, families, and local agencies within Colfax County that are served. The City of Raton Continuum was established in two thousand nine with the help of many outstanding community members, including Judge Walton, Furman Uliberry, and Mayor Apache, who are forever remembered and appreciated for their work. These were the founding fathers of the City of Raton Continuum who advocated to legislate and shared the needs of the Colfax County in youth prevention programming. Angie Ortega, owner of New Hope Family Counseling and subcontractor of restorative services for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four and FY two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-seven, was the coordinator in my position of the Colfax County Juvenile Justice Advisory Continuum during the years of two thousand eleven to two thousand thirteen. Since two thousand thirteen, the City of Raton Continuum has provided services in the Girls Circle, Boys Counsel Prevention Programs, and Restorative Justice, which has evolved into restorative practices and is an intervention within the Raton Public Schools Behavior Matrix. Restorative has taught us all about the importance of making connections, building relationships, supporting our community, students, and families, mindfulness, empathy, and follow-up. That is the key component to these services. All facilitators and the coordinator receive twenty hours a year in trauma training and must complete CYFD background clearance and criteria. The pandemic brought about many changes, including the utilization of more digital services and devices. For our kind during the pandemic, we volunteered our time to survey families about healthy eating. When we realized that families didn't have money to buy healthy fresh fruit and vegetables, we partnered with Avian's Foods, who does the Raton Public School food distribution, to deliver fresh fruit and vegetables to families. And it taught us all about the importance of healthy choices and eating for our students and families. We also offered online tutoring and tech support to Raton Public School students and families. The City of Raton Continuum has long been respected by CYFD Juvenile Justice Advisory Board for spending all monies down except for in one fiscal year out of sixteen years. The state always complements the data and the reporting completed by the City of Raton Continuum. The programs have been sustainable, and they grow every new fiscal application year due to the support of the data and the feedback from students, families, and school staff. The Learning Lab will expand and wrap around support for online students. This opportunity offers off-site day reporting and tutoring support. Similar to other continuum programs, the City of Raton Continuum began its services in two thousand thirteen in the alternative school setting, which offered support to fifteen students at that time. And out of those fifteen students, thirteen graduated successfully. And I remember every day that I was there with the Girls Circle, Boys Counsel facilitators. There were six students, they said, were five years behind on math and would not graduate that year. They did. And I have written many reference letters as I was involved with the students and continue to live in our community. And they continue to live in our community and work for federal, state, and county jobs. Currently, graduation rates are down in New Mexico, and the need for more support for online students is being recognized statewide. As with our public school systems, this is a health and social determinant right now in the United States. And the City of Raton, we can support. All the City of Raton Continuum programs are meeting our timelines month to month, and the match is always exceeded by forty thousand dollars more every year. Angie Ortega with New Hope Family Counseling will now present, and all questions may be asked at the end of her presentation. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you all for your time. We did ask Michaelan to do a printout of the slideshow. I don't know about you, but I don't like it when people read those to me, so I'm going to kind of summarize everything that's in there, and then if you have questions, feel free to ask. So what we're seeking out to do is put together a learning lab. The learning lab would be serving all the local online students. So there's a slide at the beginning of this that shows, right now, currently, there are fifty-four students being homeschooled in Raton, just Raton. We're not looking necessarily to serve the homeschool kids because there's a difference between those and online. So homeschool, usually the parents have a whole curriculum, and then the parents teach it. What we're looking at is there's a whole population of kiddos who are taking their high school classes, some middle school, online curriculum. So some of those include Raton. Raton's got, I believe, twenty licenses, so they have twenty kiddos that are doing their schooling online. There's also Logan High School, and they've got an online program. We have students from here that are doing that. And then there's also Mascaro. And then there's also a couple more, like Pecos K through twelve and some of those. So since the pandemic happened, and people had to go home and go online, some of them kind of stuck with that. And so that is a bit of a trend now, especially when technology is less in person sometimes and more online. So I work at the high school, not for the high school. I do counseling at the Tiger Den Wellness Center, and then I have worked at the schools in the past. So what we're hearing is that some of those online kids really struggle with sitting down and focusing and just working at a computer for a while and getting it done. I made, I've had some kids in the past who dropped out, as far as counseling kids, and I kind of stayed caught up with them, and I called some of their online coordinators, so like Logan and Mascaro. I've kind of stayed in touch with those coordinators. And I asked, I said, hey, what about this? Like, what if we had a place for those kids to go where they can get the extra tutoring, especially with the math? And then just have a couple staff that are just like, okay, let's go, let's get it done. And they said, you know what? That'd be awesome, because a lot of these kids, their parents are working. And so they're just kind of at home, kind of lollygagging around a little bit. So out of the online coordinators that I've talked to, about fifty percent of those kids are behind. So what my thought was, was, okay, what if we have a place where we can have the kids? And we can have, so this is what we've got so far. So I'm going to give you all the framework of what we're planning to do, and then you can ask questions. So what we have in place, or what we're trying to set in place, is we're going to have two staff. One will be a full-time complete tutor, so kiddos would have access to that all the time. We would have a full-time case manager slash supervisor, jack-of-all-trades. So the idea is to have the tutoring component there, and then if we are able to hire more, that'd be awesome. And then the other person is going to really be in charge of staying in touch with the online coordinators and the parents to make sure, okay, this kid's behind in this. We need to really get on them and get them going. Another component would be the social worker, which would be yours truly. When I worked at the alt school years ago, I was there for three years, something that helped was just having somebody, an extra person there that's just encouraging and motivating, say, you got this, you got this. Like, odds might be stacked against you, but you got it. Let's just keep pushing through. So we would also provide that component as well. Let's see. Okay, so that would cover kind of staffing. That's kind of the gist of what we have. It's going to depend on how many kids. So which kids and how many are we looking to serve? We would like to serve. If we get this many, that'd be awesome. We don't want to go over it for this next couple of months until we're kind of a little more established. But up to twenty high school kiddos, we think we could serve. And also up to five middle school kids, probably eighth grade, seventh grade. I don't know that I would want seventh graders in there with high school kids, so I'll say that. We would be able to take any of the online kits. So if it's any of the Pecos or the K through twelve, Logan, Raton, any of those, we can take the referrals, and then we could call the families, get them in, and get going. It'd be housed over at our office, which is New Hope Family Counseling, and that's right next door to Wells Fargo. That's the same building where Jamie Esquivel does her WIT taxes. So we would be located there. Let's see, what am I missing? Attendance will be a big deal. We'll have to be really communicating with families because of liability things. We want to make sure that we know where kids are at. If they're not with us, we'll be on the phone letting parents know. Safety is going to be a big deal, and behavior will be something to keep in mind. So the staff are going to be well experienced, myself included. What we used to do at the alt school is if there is ever a behavior concern, say a kiddo, let's just say, maybe got kicked out of school for a fight or something like that. If we know they already have a history of that, we would start them off on a behavior contract so that way, if they violate it, I'm sorry kiddo, but you knew what the expectation was, so we can't do this. Or something along those lines. We could welcome probation kiddos. Again, when I was down at the alt school, we actually had a lot of probation kids graduate. They're very supportive folks over there, so I think if we needed their help and assistance, we could do that, too. Let's see. I kind of think, am I covering most of it?
You are. I just want to share that we did make phone calls to all the online schools. They are ecstatic, and they are really hoping for this learning lab opportunity. It will be a pilot project. It can grow and expand if all the data collected is sufficient. One thing I want to point out is this is not an alternative schooling. It is a learning lab opportunity for support. Our programs from the continuum have always offered support, whether it's in a deliverable of restorative circles or prevention in your socio-emotional learning. This component will be the tutoring and the off-site campus, where Angie, as a licensed social worker, has the liability and the insurance to cover the overhead and is already well-constructed as an LLC and established. And we do have a special guest speaker just to share her experience at the alternative school because we understand all kids learn differently. What works for one kid may not work for another, and that's why we have offered this support. When I told the Raton Public Schools about this opportunity, they were ecstatic. They're willing to refer their online students that they feel need more support, that are falling behind, and they don't want to see them fall through the cracks. They want them supported. So thank you. And now if we can have Ms. Jo Salazar, supervisor of Team Builders.
I'm going to add to the introduction. So I got the pleasure of working with this little lady with class two thousand and ten, nine? Two thousand and nine, so that was like, I was fresh out of graduate school back then. So I remember this little lady, and she came in, and she was, you want to say about it? How far behind?
I, as a senior, I had to make, do eleven credits completed.
So eleven credits is about a year and a half, if, for as far as credits, as far as school. So this lady came, and she got it all done in a year. So I was super proud. I still have her picture on my wall. She graduated through the alternative school. She was a good leader there, and then now she is a supervisor over at Team Builders. So I just wanted her to be here so you guys could get to see kind of how this stuff goes. And I wanted her to just give a fast experience of what it was like for her graduating there.
Good evening. So as an alternative school graduate, we had three seniors, three seniors that year. All three of us graduated that year. If it wasn't for the alternative school, I honestly don't know if I would have graduated that year. Alternative school was a huge difference for me. My junior year, I messed up my knee in basketball. After I had messed up my knee in basketball, I gave up hope on school. That basketball, I love, the court was my life. So my grades slipped, everything. I fell behind on my academics and everything. So alternative school, going into alternative school, having to get eleven credits, it was very stressful, very overwhelming. We looked at that, and I looked at Ms. Angie, and I was like, I can't do this. There's no way I could do this. Which brings me to the point of having Ms. Danielle and Ms. Angie doing this. This is huge for our community, and it's such an asset for our community to have this program coming back to our kids. As one of those youth that lost hope in that, I am super excited for these youth that are going to be able to have this again. Ms. Angie and Ms. Danielle have been advocates in my life for many different things, so I'm super proud and super glad that they are the ones that are coordinating this because I know these kids will have exactly what they need in many forms, as well as mentoring to schoolwork, to being a positive support and role model for them. So thank you guys so much for that.
Thank you, Ms. Danielle.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Another guest speaker we had was Mark Romero, and he's, he didn't get to make it. He's doing a shift change, or he's coming into shift change, and he's one of the RPD. So he's also going to be here to kind of give a fast little spill. He was two thousand and nine, I think.
Me and him graduated together, yes.
Last little piece that I just left out is, I think, a big piece that I'll be really excited to work on is life skills. There's, how often do I see the Facebook memes of, I wish the kids got to learn some of this other stuff? And it's not fair, because sometimes the public school can't get to some of that kind of stuff. So it would be really cool to involve community members and say, have someone from the bank come and teach the kiddos a little bit more about credit and interest rates, things I wish I had known at a younger age, and how to change a tire, and just all those kinds of things that school can't sometimes get to. Another piece that we did back in the day was a lot of community service projects. I think that the kids need to know that people think they're awesome, and then I think our kids need to know that our community is awesome. But they aren't going to know that unless we get them a lot more involved. So that's another really big piece that I would like to see happen. And we did, we used to do quite a bit of stuff. I know we painted a few buildings around town. We cleaned trash at the dump for five hundred dollars or something like that, I think it was. So anyhow, we would like to keep families involved and definitely the community as well. So I think you guys have questions.
We went through it fast, sorry.
Danielle, you made a comment about this program was not to be an alternative school?
Yes. It can be.
Contract for goals is to create an effective alternative school.
Yes. Yes, so maybe I should clarify a bit in that. It is a learning lab opportunity, and we have talks to CYFD extensively. And all respect to you, Mr. Honeyfield, over twenty meetings altogether. They are running other learning labs across the state. I was the coordinator of the Town and Towns Continuum, and they had a learning lab for Towns. And what we want this to do is it is an alternative setting, and that is the reason for the wording "alternative school." But Angie is not going to be a teacher there. She is going to be a support. All these students already have their teachers, their coaches. They even have social workers online, and they have a lot of support because online school right now is at such an advanced place that so many are doing it. Even my own child does online school, and she does through New Mexico Connections. But the support that they receive is amazing. So where they're falling through the cracks, especially what Raton Public Schools has expressed with their online school, is they're not staying up to date on their homework assignments. They're not able to stay to pace of where they should be. What this learning lab opportunity would offer is that support to ensure that they are getting onto their classes, doing their classes. If they struggle, they will have certified tutors in there tutoring them and supporting them. Great question. Thank you.
Comments, questions?
I guess one of my concerns is always is how much time this is going to take from our staff. Michaelan, is there any administrative fees associated with this at all?
I think Danielle can answer.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to share something. This is exciting. When I first started, we were scrounging for money. I remember I started at thirteen thousand as coordinator. Programs were very low. There was no fiscal money at all at that time. We advocated strongly to bring in a percentage rate. We then got three percent, then increased to five percent, then to fifteen percent. And while, now with the programs, it's over fifty thousand that the City of Raton receives in program support administrative fee costs. If we do well in this pilot project, there will be additional funding for years to come to the City of Raton. They have shared that they would like us to work at a pace where we can handle the work and not adding to Michaelan or administrative side. I am dedicated to doing that. I am dedicated to giving all my time to ensure this program is successful as a coordinator, ensuring that invoicing is prompt, that my CYFD data reporting is functional and effective in the reporting system, that the data is collected that has gotten us to where we are at today in programming.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Schuster, you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. I believe this program can work and be of benefit.
Okay. I would indicate a motion.
To approve agreement. Twenty-five, ninety, dash, three thousand, dash, eighty-one, twenty-two, six between the City, between the Children, Youth, and Family Department and the City of Raton.
Motion and a second to approve the agreement number two, five, six, nine, zero, three, zero, 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 eight, one, two, two, six. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have to vote on the C as well. Yeah, it's the poll.
So we'll bring up item C now, deliberate an act on the subcontract agreement between the City of Raton and New Hope Family Counseling LLC. Any questions or comments? Take a motion if there are none.
Well, I guess the question I had was in this agreement with CYFD, they had stipulated in their prior written consent. I guess it's Danielle, do you have that?
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner, I think we had talked about this previously. This is similar to the current agreements that we have with CYFD. Upon your approval this evening, not only of the contract with CYFD, but the subcontract, you will not be signing the subcontract this evening because I do need to submit it to CYFD for their approval. We're kind of doing it simultaneously because of the short timeline that we have. Typically, with a normal contracting schedule, I have you approve the contract, and then maybe a month later, we do an RFP, you know, select who our providers are going to be, and then do the subcontracts. But because of the short window, this CYFD agreement is a DocuSign, so I'll need to coordinate that with you. And then I have a standard cover letter that I send with the unsigned subcontract for... for their review and approval. And then they'll send a letter back saying, yes, we approve you to subcontract with this provider. So hopefully we can, you know, get the, um, all of the signatures from CYFD and the approval of the subcontract within, you know, two to three weeks, I would hope. But that is a requirement, yes.
Do you have questions?
Make a motion to approve subcontract agreement between the City of Raton and New Hope Family Counseling LLC.
Hold on a second.
A motion and a second to adopt, to accept. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate enact on quick claim deed from the City of Raton, the grantor. To Pecorius Pueblo, the grantee for the proposed casino, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, on January 23rd, 2024, the City of Raton passed a resolution declaring surplus property and approving a government-to-government transfer of 132.6 acres of land to the Pecorius Pueblo. On that date, the City Commission expressed its desire to support this project that is located just east and slightly north of the I-25, 450 interchange. On October 8th, a resolution was reintroduced to clarify that the de-annexation is 376.5 acres, of which 132 acres is targeted for the Pecorius Pueblo. Finally, on November 12th, 2024, the City Commission clarified the status of land by public hearing and deliberation on ordinance number 1028 for the de-annexation to the City of Raton, New Mexico of contiguous territory of 376.7 acres located in the vicinity, vicinity of the I-25, 450 interchange. The Indian Gaming Compact between the State of New Mexico and the Indian tribes and Pueblos stipulates that any land held in trust by the United States for the exclusive benefit of the tribe cannot be located within the city limits. Tonight, the City brings forth for your consideration the first proposed quick claim deed from the City of Raton, the grantor, to Pecorius Pueblo, the grantee for the proposed casino. This deed will be turned over to the Pueblo Government for consideration. It provides a detailed legal description of the land and right of reversion for 10 years if the casino is not built. I want to advise the Commission and the public that this deed may come up a number of times while the language is being agreed to. This language is reviewed by both governing bodies, their respective councils, the state and federal government. I ask for everybody's patience during this process and I predict in the words of Yogi Berra, that ladies and gentlemen, it's deja vu over again, will come up again and again. The City recommends an affirmative vote on this measure, subject to proposed changes.
Alrighty, thank you. Any comments, questions? Like Mr. Mestes stated, this is probably going to come back to us after some corrections, after some bargaining. Uh, so if we do make a motion to pass this, it will need to be made with the exception or the addition that, uh, subject to change in the motion. Uh, it's pretty straightforward. It does call in the reversion as Mr. Mestes explained. Nothing is done. If the casino is not built by March 1st, 2035, the land will revert back to the city. Any other comments, questions?
Make a motion to approve the quickly deed from the City of Raton, grantor, to Pecorius Pueblo, the grantee for the purpose of the casino.
With the subject to change.
With the subject to change.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Please note one opposed. Thank you. Uh, motion carries. Item E, deliberate enact on application for reappointment to the Raton Water Board. I'm gathering that's why Mr. Morris is with us this evening.
Exactly.
We have a application here from Mr. Mark Morris, who's been on the board. I don't want to give him any idea how long you've been there, Mark, but I think you're the reigning senior member, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
Lot of experience there. I would support the uh, reappointment of Mr. Morris to the water board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
I would move through.
Okay, don't really need a motion to do that, though. Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Welcome back, Mark.
Thank you.
NMF, deliberate enact on City of Raton Credit Card Implementation Policy, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, the City needs to implement credit card use and adopt a credit card policy. This policy outlines the proper use and management of municipal credit card issued to officials for authorized business expense. The goal is to ensure transparency, accountability, and compliance with applicable laws. Municipal credit cards may be used solely for official city-related expenses, including but not limited to travel, training, supplies, and other necessary purchases. Personnel use of, personnel use of municipal credit cards is strictly prohibited. Car holders will ensure that this, that all expenses are reasonable, necessary, and within budgeted limits. Receipts must be kept for all transactions and submitted with detailed reports for reimbursement or documentation. Unauthorized or inappropriate purchases may result in disciplinary action. All transactions must be pre-approved by the Commission, City Manager, Chief of Staff, or Department Ed as applicable. Expenditures over a specified threshold will require additional approval. This policy will be reviewed, excuse me, annually to ensure it meets the municipality's financial and operational needs. The City recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
Excuse me. Any comments, questions?
So this card is uh, under written visa?
Uh, Mayor Commission, we've put in your packet, there was a presentation given at the water board meeting. So I know Lindy and Lori were in attendance at that meeting. This was kind of initiated by the Water Works first and then we decided because we're under the same federal tax ID number that we could do one application for the city as a whole and then the water would kind of be a department under that. But yes, this is a in-bank visa card. I think like the City Manager emphasized, um, we're really not looking to issue cards to specific people. Um, for years, you know, the city has been very reluctant to even have a credit card, but it's becoming, you know, increasingly cha, it's a challenge even now with municipal league registrations because they won't accept POs. Everything has to be done by credit card. Um, we do from time to time have some kind of emergency purchases or purchases that maybe we don't have a set up, maybe a account with a vendor and they want a credit card. Um, what I really want to emphasize here is that we still have to follow the city's procurement policy. So um, I think looking at the presentation that was in your packet, there is no annual fee. They did talk about the benefits of having monthly cash rebates, but I mean, we're not going to have the volume of usage with this card to probably ever get a rebate. Um, I mean, we have had some equipment breakdowns and things happen in the past where you got to get a part here quick, they won't accept a PO. So if we could pay with a credit card, I mean, we would not carry any sort of a balance on this card at all. But as travel becomes more prevalent, especially out-of-state travel, we have the challenges of airline tickets, you know, lodging, paying for registration fees. Um, so I envision the card being used in that manner. I think it's something that we would start real basic and maybe ease into it, it could evolve. But this isn't like a P-card program where department heads would have their own individual cards. So that's not what we're proposing here. Um, in-bank is our current uh, financial institution, so um, that's why we chose to, to go with them.
Well, I guess the reason I asked a question about uh, the underwriter. So if we transfer banks, that Visa account goes with us? We don't need to get another corporate card from another institution?
Um, I believe, and I don't know, Mark was there for the presentation. I, that's what I, how I understood.
And if there's anything wrong, we can blame him.
That's right.
Now, it would be much, much easier to change the credit card than it would to change banks again. So I mean, we're still in transition with that. So I'm hoping we're not changing banks anytime soon, but um, that is definitely a challenge. But we probably, um, you know, would look to go out for RFP again in a couple of years.
The uh, cash back thing, I think you'll be surprised that it will accumulate.
Well, their monthly net volume, well, I guess it says zero to 83,000. So we might get 1% cash rebate. But uh, I mean, we certainly, I, I think with other P-card programs, you know, a lot of municipalities have moved to that type of a program and the rebates is a big thing for them. But I, I'm not proposing that now or probably anytime in the near future. But um, like I said, I just want to emphasize that um, if it's under our current purchasing policy, anything over 1,000 has to have three quotes. And uh, anything over five would be written quotes from the vendors. I mean, we would still be following those procedures.
Is there any language we will have to add to our procurement policy regarding the cards?
Um, you know, we're actually looking to revise our procurement policy. I'm really hoping to, uh, we haven't done that since 2015. So we'll certainly take a look at that. But I would hope in the next month or two, we could bring you a revised procurement policy.
Any other questions?
And it may take us a little bit of time once we submit the application. I mean, we have to submit financials and some other information with our application. So I would work with Geneva to get that submitted and.
I think it will definitely help, especially travel and stuff like that.
Yeah, for our purposes, I mean, our card's going to remain in our safe. So I mean, if, if it was issued to somebody, we have a form in here that they would need to sign. Um, we currently have fuel cards and tractor supply cards. And so the tractor supply cards get issued or checked out. They sign it out and bring it back with receipts and sign it back in. So we've always had pretty good controls on the, the cards that we do currently have.
It would be my suggestion that we keep the card like that and just, you guys, any tickets or that, rooms that need to be reserved and all that, you guys do that. And while they're traveling for food and that, we do it the way we're doing it.
Yeah, I'm not proposing that we send the card with anybody. My reluctance with any type of credit card is if a violation occurs, it's going to occur before I even see the statement.
Yeah.
And then you can't really undo it at that point. So definitely need to have some good controls in place. Um, I'm sure we have the ability to review online statements, um, not have to wait a month for the statement to come in.
Okay, if, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'll move to approve the City of Raton Credit Card Implementation Policy.
A motion and a second to implement the credit card policy. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, deliberate enact on proposal for a 2025 Ford F-250 regular cab, four-by-four Oxford White for the Raton Police Department Animal Control, utilizing the state price agreement 200000002100030. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, in your packet is a quote from Chalmers Ford in Rio Rancho, New Mexico for 2025 Ford F-250 regular cab, four-by-four Oxford White with six compartment animal box for the Raton Police Department Animal Control using the state price agreement. The total amount is $73,391.70 with $50,915 going for the vehicle and the remaining for the animal box. This item was budgeted and is being paid with $55,000 from the Animal Control budget and the remaining will need to come from general fund reserves. The City recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
Alrighty, any comments, questions?
Was the local Peleong dealer given an opportunity to match this?
Uh, no, I believe we went out and we looked at uh, different vehicles from different uh, dealers. And I think, Michael Lynn, they got three bids or three?
Uh, this is on a state price agreement.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is state price agreement. And um, they shopped around and this was the best price in Rio Rancho. And it was also, um, we were able to include the box in it, which was a factor.
And that's what I was going to bring up to your, uh, Commissioner. When I purchased hot shot trucks for the City of, uh, for Raton Seem Center, I had to go through Chalmers as well. They, I guess are the state specialists in putting these boxes, especially when it comes to refrigeration and heating. So uh, yeah, Chalmers has got a lot of our hot shot trucks, so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Ford Ford F-250 regular cab, four-by-four Oxford White for the City for Raton Police Department Animal Control utilizing the state price agreement 20 dash 00000 dash 21 dash 00030.
Motion and second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, deliberate enact on recommendation for, of award for the Aquatic Center Pest Abatement Project. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, competitive sealed bids were accepted by the City of Raton for the Regional Aquatic Center Pest Control Contract on Thursday, February 6th, 2025 at 2:00 PM for the abatement project, project number COR 250206. These pest control activities will be located on the roof of the Aquatic Center as access to the maintenance room within the facility. The work shall generally consist of humane trapping and removal of nuisance birds and bird waste, performing anti-micro viral enzymatic cleaning and odor removal, installation of approximately 2,700 square feet of UV-resistant bird netting for pest exclusion and minor HVAC repairs. The City received one bid from TNT Pest Control in the amount of $5,903.20 plus NMGRT for a total of $6,390.70. This contract will be paid out of Aquatic Center GRT and the City recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
Alrighty, any questions, comments? Steve Burns.
I'll make a motion to approve the award for the Aquatic Center Pest Abatement Project. Hold on a second.
A motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Y, deliberate enact on Resolution 202509, Budget Adjustment Number Eight, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, I yield the floor to Raton. Mayor and Commissioner, I yield the floor to Raton City Chief of Staff, Ms. Michael Land and to the chief.
Mayor and Commissioner, I have some additional information that's being passed down to you that we can review as we discuss kind of the dilemma that we currently have with our Lodger's Tax Promotional Fund. We've talked about this for a couple of months anyway. I know I initially brought it up with the Lodger's Tax Board in a memo that I issued to them back in November. I think the last page of the handout that I gave you kind of shows where we're at year-to-date, or at least through the end of January. We track the collections. And so we can kind of compare that with the previous year, which we're already seeing a slight improvement this year, which is encouraging. Last year, we kind of had budgeted closer to that five hundred thousand figure and we came in at about four hundred and sixty-six. So that's kind of when the problems started. We were about thirty thousand, we, we had a deficit of about thirty thousand in the previous year. But we had also made commitments with our budget. One of them included the Gravel Adventure Guide, which was a little over twenty thousand dollars. We've only paid out about thirty-three hundred of that. So we still need to pay about eighteen thousand of that once the guide itself is complete. So I just wanted you to see this report. It's the report that I prepare for the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. So the last few meetings, we have had some requests and the board hasn't taken action on those because, as you can see, if we kind of just go down the various line items, most events either come out of annual events or our contingency fund. We do have some print advertising and then radio advertisers that were awarded funding for the year. So I try to give the board, you know, an indication of what the balances and all the various line items are so that they can make their recommendations to the commission as these requests for funding come before them. And then we bring them to the commission for final approval. So you'll see, if you look at the annual events, I, I literally have one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars left in that line item. And then our contingency fund, I have about twelve hundred dollars left in that line item, but I still owe the gravel guide. So I kind of have a deficit in that line item. So I was kind of looking at what line items I could take money out of just to make up the deficit that we'll have once we pay for the gravel guide. So my proposal this evening, and it's just a budget adjustment, initially, we had said, you know, fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund to make up for the shortfall and have some funds available. We already have requests for the meeting that's going to be next Wednesday. And then in the coming months, we'll have requests for Gate City, the balloon rally, probably Cinco de Mayo, kind of our signature events. So we haven't made any funding decisions on those as of yet. Gate City, we typically fund it in two, two payments. They'll usually get the first payment sometime in March or April because they will already start booking the acts and, you know, start promoting that heavily before Labor Day. And then the second payment comes out of the next fiscal year. That event, you know, that, that is an event that the city had asked Main Street to create. And I think they've done a really good job for the past nine years. This will be the 10th year. I know they always report back that they get about eighty volunteers to put that event together. So, so that is something that the city historically has funded. And so if we want to be able to fund that, the balloon rally, I, I think we're going to have to do a budget adjustment, whether or not it comes out of the general fund. We've looked at non-promotional. The funds are a little tight in non-promotional, even though I'm showing a little bit larger ending cash balance as of the end of January. We still have quite a few things that we haven't paid out and we have some building needs at the visitor's center with the HVAC repairs or replacements. We currently have a snowplow on order, so the funds for the convention center are committed. And then the Schuler, I do have a line item where we did budget for some carpeting. We do know with the most recent quote that I received from Billy D. that we don't have enough funding in that line item to pay for the carpet at this time, but we might need to look at additional suppliers on state price agreement and get some alternate pricing. So, I mean, I have a few line items, even signage, that we haven't used anything for this year. But other than that, I mean, we kind of have contracts with the museum, the art gallery, Schuler Restoration. So most of those funds are committed for the year. And then we'll have the expense of the fireworks, which gets spent a little bit later in the fiscal year. Another discussion that we had just prior to the meeting was potentially, we could look to economic development funds. I mean, we do have funds available in economic development. It would just be if we could justify maybe some specific expenses. I mean, the gravel guide potentially might fall under that, but I'm not sure how the commission feels about that.
From my opinion, I, I'm having a real heartbreak on carrying the, the funding from the general fund. I think, as, I think Commissioner Chatterley said to you, that would be set in precedent that I really don't want to do.
And the only other thing that I've offered to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, I don't know if I have my report with me, but I have four billboard contracts that will expire in July. So those billboard contracts, if we don't renew them, would be, you know, probably twenty-five hundred, twenty-eight hundred a month. So if we let those go, then in the new fiscal year, we could allocate those funds elsewhere. Or we could potentially use the savings from that to pay back the general fund. Or if our estimates, if we kind of lowballed our estimates this year and Lodger's Tax comes in closer to the five hundred thousand, then certainly maybe the problem will solve itself, but.
I guess the one thing, after we had visited earlier this week, I'd really like to see the Lodger's Tax Board put a proposal before us to assess the tax on Airbnb rentals. We've talked about this before and Ken's just been pulling out the help. To me, they need to help themselves and.
And they agree, they do agree with you.
Well, if I was a motel owner, I'd kind of take resentment to the fact I'm paying Lodger's Tax. These other folks aren't. Unfortunately, I think a lot of the public that stays in Raton now are reverting to that option.
I mean, I can't tell you how many Raton has. I was shocked that Ria dosso has about twelve hundred Airbnbs. Now, they were significantly impacted with the recent fires. They did tell us at the budget conference, because we did attend a session where they gave a presentation. The management of it can be, most of them have companies that they have to pay a monthly fee to help manage that and identify and collect the monies for the city. So we would potentially have some cost involved with that. But I agree, it's not fair to the current lodging establishments.
Well, but it would help alleviate some of the shortfall. I'm kind of like Mayor, it's an easy come, easy go, dollar man. Once it goes, I don't see us getting back. But like I said, I mean, if, I'd like to take a look at the Lodger's Tax thing. But the other thing that I guess I would comment on, and I don't travel that much, so I can't really speak for the majority, but how effective is a billboard anymore?
And I asked Michael Land, we, we get no information on how effective that is.
I think we've talked in the past about the only way you could probably track it is if you created a special website where they had to go and then you could see how many people were going to that website that only appeared on a billboard.
And it's my understanding, we're, we're just, we're paying twenty thousand for this gravel guide, that we don't even have any rules that qualify to be considered gravel tour roads. So I think, I think this, I'm going to probably get in trouble for this, but Lodger's Tax needs to start asking more questions and learn to say no to some things. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, I, well, Lex had been earlier. Your voice is better.
I'll take, I'll take the shots, Mark.
Lindy, I apologize. I didn't scan and send you the handout, but it's pretty much the same information that we had at the last Lodger's Tax Advisory Board meeting, so.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. I understand. If you can hear me, my two cents, there are certain activities that the Lodger's Tax does help fund. Do you put heads and beds add to the Lodger's Tax as well as other, you know, other areas, other businesses? So I believe there are certain, and I think Michael Land has probably sorted those out, certain ones that, that really are good for heads and beds, that those should have positive, you know, votes from us to, to continue with supporting those, like those activities.
I think the other point we wanted to make, and the mayor, and I think I talked about this earlier, one of my coworkers did point out that it's not just heads and beds and Lodger's Tax. I mean, when people come to Raton and stay in Raton, it is generating grocery receipts tax. And so the grocery receipts tax more than likely is going into the, the general fund. So we do, you know, generate a certain amount of grocery receipts tax off of these events and just people staying in our motels, eating in our restaurants, shopping in our gift shops.
Mr. Bennett, you're in that kind of business. What do you think?
Well, one thing is, is, it is just, it's kind of like the sign of his own, it's an advisory board. There's very little, Lodger's Tax can't say anything, give anybody away without it coming to y'all for y'all to have to file and say so.
So in other words, we need to learn to say.
Well.
Like a pass the buck. I'm like, they can say no and stop something from coming this way, but it still all falls back to it was y'all's ultimate decision. And as far as like you were talking about on the Airbnb, I, I said that for a long time, it should be, you should be paying Lodger's Tax.
But I mean, like with the coffee shop, do you notice, I, I mean, is it a significant impact on your business, these events being held in the community?
Yes. Some of them were a significant impact for the bar, obviously. But the coffee shop does well, pretty much anything that is going on first, almost anything. The balloon rally does really well, even if I don't have the trailer out there at it, people will still come to it, break a door. So we do have, when those events happen, they're, and talking to other business owners, they all do see an increase in the events. People are spending money in the restaurants, in the motels, in the gas stations. You are getting the GRT for that.
Commissioner, if I may, one thing that we do have, that we haven't had in the past, is our placer data. And when people are requesting funds, we could actually get data from how many people attended. We could see if there have been increases at hotels, increases at restaurants and so forth. So we do have that data available now. And, you know, we have been encouraging businesses in the city to come talk to us about getting their placer data.
Yeah. Are you going to make any of those reports public? I haven't seen one.
Yeah, we can.
Whatever you want. I'll make one for you.
Well, I, I think Mr. Bennett made a good point about being an advisory board. You know, I know the commission and Neil's been on the commission long enough that, you know, the, the commission wants to value the job that the, the board does and the time that they put being a volunteer on these boards. And so I know generally, the commission respects their recommendations and, and usually does approve them as they were recommended. So I have seen some strife in years past where the commission would do the complete opposite of what the, the board members recommended and it caused board members to resign and feel like they weren't valued or needed. And, I mean, we don't want to make any board member feel that way because I think they do, do a really good job when they're presented with these funding requests. And they do ask a lot of questions. I mean, Desiree is the secretary to the, to the advisory board.
No, I'm not trying to, to demean what they do. I've participated in the meetings. They do do a good job. They do ask questions. It's just sometimes some of the asks are from things that we have asked in the past for that organization to find some other streaming, some other funding streams because the city's not your loan source.
That's a very good point as well.
That's where I'm at. If, if we could swing this, like you mentioned, there was considerable balance in economic development. If we could swing some of these costs that could be covered by that, I would rather go that route.
So, I mean, we could either just approve the budget adjustment to come out of the other source and I could correct the line items to reflect that, or I could bring this budget adjustment back to you for approval.
Mike Land, give me a suggestion. What does this need to read if we take it out of economic development?
So the economic development is our Fund 215. So rather than the transfer coming out of the general fund, it would be out of the Fund 215 Economic Development. And certainly, if we didn't need the full fifty thousand at the end of the fiscal year, I mean, but I, I need to probably be able to at least adjust these annual events and contingency fund line items to give the board something to work with.
Well, I'd make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve transfer from line 215 Economic Development to.
You have a motion? You have a second? My motion and a second to approve the transfer from line item 215. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Opposed? Sorry, Lindy. Hearing that, motion passes. Item J, City Manager Report. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commissioner, bottom line upfront, next Tuesday from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., the commission will convene for our second planning session while I've been city manager. The session will provide us an opportunity to discuss commission priorities as we commit limited funds to several expensive projects around the city. The treasurer's been preparing for a physical inventory that's coming up with the police. While crime has been down in the city during the recent few months, the force is exploring training opportunities for officers. So, you know, we could be ready to go in the near future. The fire department has had two members that graduated from the fire academy. Public Works is working on the details of the five hundred thousand dollar grant to modernize and improve Romero Park. Engineering, last week, the city commission voted to postpone the proposal to update zoning ordinances until the February 11th meeting tonight. Mr. Brennan Williams was unavailable tonight. until the February 11th meeting tonight. Mr. Brennan Williams was unavailable tonight, so we have rescheduled him for the February 25th meeting. Facilities, the facility is still looking at the situation in the ground movement in City Hall. This will be brought up at the planning session next week. The clerk is scheduling with city staff and commission for municipal day at the Capitol at the end of the month. Please see the clerk if you plan on attending. Economic development, a presentation was made to the New Mexico Minority Business Development Agency to attract businesses to bid on our contracts and for possible relocation to the city. Mentions and dispatches, I would like to give out a shout out to our actual dispatch team. Tonight's promotion was also a reflection on their great service to the city. And finally, closing thoughts. President's Day is Monday, February 17, 2025. It is observed annually on the third Monday in February. Although the holiday is most often called President's Day, by morphing Lincoln's Birthday on the 12th and Washington's Birthday on the 27th, most people don't know that the actual official observed federal holiday is called Washington's Birthday. Starting in 1896, it has become a tradition to read Washington's farewell address on February 22nd in the U.S. Senate. While I'm not going to read the entire address, I would like to close with these words from that address. "The independence and liberty possessed are work from joint councils, joint efforts of common dangers, sufferings, and successes. But these considerations, however powerful they address themselves to your sensibility, are greatly outweighed by those which apply more immediately to your interest. Here, every portion of our country finds the most commanding motives or carefully guarded in preserving the union as a whole." In short, this means that the importance of the union that bonded all Americans together and provided for our freedom and prosperity was our country is to remain united." That's all I have, sir.
All righty, thank you. Any closing comments, Commissioner Honeyfield, Commissioner Giacomo, Commissioner Schuster?
No, a good evening.
Thanks for joining us. I have none. This meeting will stand adjourned.